It's eight thirty. We'll call this morning's meeting of the Clay County Board of Commissioners to order for Tuesday, November 25th. And just to point out, we have this morning had been having a few technical difficulties with some of our microphones, so hopefully the audience can all hear us and we'll try to get that fixed shortly. So with that, is there approval of the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bear, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carried. Next, we have citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens to be heard on items not on the agenda? Any citizens to be heard? None in the audience, any online?
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Approval of bills and vouchers. I don't think that's working, but...
None given approved?
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Kravnov, second by Commissioner Bear. Any further discussion on that motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carried. We will move into our eight thirty-five agenda item. That is Minnesota Power Maple River to Cayuna 345 KB Transmission Line Project Presentation. Do we have our... Drew? Is that... Okay, Drew, come on up.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Sorry I was a couple minutes late there, but thanks for having me. My name's Drew Jenke. I'm an environmental compliance specialist with Minnesota Power here today to talk the Maple River to Cayuna or MRC Transmission Line Project. If we could go to the next slide, or do I control it? Oh, perfect. So a little bit about the project. It is a joint proposal between Minnesota Power, who I work for, Otter Tail Power Company, and Great River Energy. The project itself will be a new 345 kilovolt, single-circuit transmission line built on double-circuit capable structures. All in all, the line will be approximately 160 miles, running from Minnesota Power's Cayuna substation, just outside of Ironton, Minnesota, in the Brainerd Baxter area. And the other terminal point is the Maple River Substation owned by Otter Tail Power, and that one is just outside of the Harwood or Fargo area. Why we're building the project, really, there's four main project need points. Really, the big one is to enhance the reliability of the regional transmission system. So I think of this project as enabling that bulk power transfer at a regional scale. Similar with the second point, they're increasing transmission system capacity. Again, we're looking to enable more transmission at a regional scale, meaning growing electrical demand and enhance resiliency during extreme weather events, and that's at either end of the line. The project will be bidirectional, so depending on where the energy is needed at any given time, it can go either way. And then, again, enabling that cost-effective regional transfer. Little further background on the project. So the Mid-Continent Independent System Operator, or MISO, is a group that essentially operates the electric grid. And every so often, MISO will take a look at the regional transmission system and determine if upgrades are needed. This MRC project was approved in tranche 2.1 of the MISO approval process in December of 2024. That follows their tranche one batch of project approvals that were approved in 2023. So you can see there circled near the top of the map where this MRC project fits into the grand scheme of the MISO recent batches or tranches of approved projects. Touched on this a little bit already here, but some of the project components, as I mentioned, it'll be approximately 160 miles, depending on how much zigging and zagging we do between the two substation endpoints. Will be built as a single-circuit 345-kilovolt overhead transmission line project on double-circuit capable structures. For the project, we will hang both sets of conductors, so there'll be six total wires. But initially, they'll be jumpered together near the terminal or substation endpoints, so initially, it's going to operate as a single circuit, but we'll have that second set of conductors ready and strong when it comes time to energize a second circuit. Timeline. So a lot of this year has really been focused on stakeholder engagement. We've had two rounds of public open houses. First round was in June. At that one, we had a pretty broad study area that we were able to show the public and folks and get some feedback on. We did hold a second round of public open houses in October, and at that one, we had it narrowed down a little more into some preliminary routes, which we'll show in a bit here, and which is where we're at now. We are planning a third round of public open houses for the next spring, likely in the March or April timeframe. Getting into next year, we do anticipate submitting our permit applications to both the Minnesota Public Utilities Commission and the North Dakota Public Service Commission next year. We'll touch on a little bit better on the timelines there, but we'll also be working on engineering, environmental surveys, and begin discussions with landowners for right-of-way and right-of-entry agreements. Assuming all goes well, we would begin construction in 2029 and have the project in service by So this map shows that broader study area, and this was really our starting point. For reference, the Cayuna substation is on the far right or eastern portion of the figure here, and then the Maple River substation, you can see just outside of Fargo on the far-left or western edge of the map. What you see highlighted in blue is potential routing options centered on existing transmission lines, for the most part. We... It's not only good practice, but we're actually driven by state statute to follow existing transmission lines as much as possible. So what we did was start with this very broad study area, which allowed us some flexibility to do some routing work in order to get from A to B. And this is what we were able to show at open houses in June. From those open houses and some feedback with primarily state agencies like the DNR, we've developed it down into these preliminary routes, which are also our certificate of need notice area. So this is the area that's really been winnowed down to our potential routing options.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Nice question, please. Thank you for clarifying this. You know, these swaths are several miles wide. So how do you... What is the best course of action for public engagement for folks that maybe just look at a blue line and think, oh, this is following I-94's corridor, or I'm good, when they might be three or four miles off that, but could be included in your project scope?
Yeah, and so we set a one-and-a-half-mile buffer either way off of existing lines, just to make sure we do notice an appropriate amount of folks and to keep options open. Ideally, we would co-locate a route immediately adjacent to an existing line, but as far as the public outreach with questions, we do have project website set up, email hotline and a phone hotline that essentially all gets routed to me. I have had a few questions, you know? It looks like the edge of this blue line is running right through my property. Does that mean you're proposing the line there, or is it just the area you're considering? So we've had plenty of those, I guess, clarification conversations.
And I guess part of the reason I ask is I do live within that buffer line of the transmission line, and so I've really not been aware of it to this point, but appreciate... I've been aware just because of the commission piece, but not as a resident piece. My other question is, you know, I appreciate that you clarify that, for the most part, you have to follow through with what existing components are by statute, but you said they're "for the most part." And so are those, for the most part, areas identified in here at all?
Right.
I mean, is there a map that shows where those areas could be that aren't attached to an existing?
Not in this presentation. We don't have the existing lines mapped. We do have that mapped on our website. We have an interactive project web map. And actually, primarily here in Clay County, there's just not a whole lot of existing transmission lines, so anything over 100 kilovolt is what the statute directs you to follow. And really, as we get towards the border crossing and really into the northwest portion here in Clay County, there just isn't much. So we would be looking at what we call more greenfield development within the county.
But that is all accessible on the website?
Yes.
Good, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right.
This map is just the one we were looking at previously, just a little bit larger. So the plan is here to take these preliminary routes, narrow this down even further into a proposed route at some point next year. A little background on the Minnesota Public Utilities Commission permitting process. So the Minnesota Public Utilities Commission, for those that are unfamiliar, is a five-member panel appointed by the governor on staggering terms, and they regulate just about everything we do as public utilities, from the rates we're allowed to charge our customers, to where we build our generation sources or source our electricity from, and then, if we can, and if so, where we can put these transmission lines. So for this project, we will be going to the Public Utilities Commission for two types of permits. First one is a certificate of need, essentially just like it sounds. We go to the commission with an application, explaining why the project is needed and in the interest of our ratepayers and the public. That one, we will be filing by early February of next year. The second type of permit is the route permit, and that's the one where we go to the commission with an actual proposed route on a map for them to consider. Through that process, anyone can propose alternative routes for consideration as well. We need a little bit more time to come up with a proposed route that's going to make the most sense, so we're going to file that one a little later in the next year, likely around the August timeframe. Both of these processes have ample opportunities for public comment and engagement, and we've been spreading the word to those interested. Just for awareness here, the North Dakota side does have a pretty similar process, beginning there with number two, the certificate of need, certificate of public convenience and necessity. That is similar to the certificate of need process in Minnesota. And then the certificate of corridor compatibility and route permit is similar to the route permit process east of the border. I've touched on this a bit here, but just to give you an idea of our routing process and where we collect input, really, we started with that initial study area, which was the bigger map, had some open houses and discussions, as I mentioned, with some state agencies, identified routing opportunities, and then developed preliminary routes, which is where we're at now. We're taking... We're still working on some of the feedback we got at the October open houses. We've got a few more agency meetings coming up here to dig a little deeper into where we're at with the preliminary routes, and from there, we'll identify a proposed route next year prior to submitting to both state commissions. Through this, you know, what we're asking folks for feedback on is whether there are any constraints that we ought to be aware of, that we're not, or if there are any sort of routing opportunities for us to consider as well. Once we do get down into more of a proposed route area, we will hit the ground running, no pun intended, with some field-level surveys. Geotechnical evaluations really feed into our engineering design as far as where we can place structures, and if so, how to design those foundations. We'll also do a whole suite of environmental surveys from cultural and archaeological resources, wetland surveys, and then a whole suite of biological surveys. This figure gives a good demonstration of our preferred structure design. So this is a steel monopole, anywhere from 120 to 180 feet high, depending on the topography of where it's located. And then, the right-of-way width needed for a new 345-kilovolt transmission line is 150 feet.
Yes, yes, Commissioner. So when you said you were going to... Are you going to string the second line in there too, or just hang everything for the string to be run?
The second set would be strung, yeah. So all six... You see there's six-wire location. Yep, all six would be strung.
And just using half of it at the time?
Yeah, so they would all be energized, but it'll operate as one circuit.
Yeah.
Yep.
I have one more question. So when you do the easements, are they 150 feet, or I mean, how wide are they?
Yeah, correct. So standalone easement is 150 feet. In a co-location scenario, we can overlap, like, for example, if there's an existing 230-kilovolt line, we can overlap that right-of-way about 30 feet, so it'd be 120 feet off of the edge of the right-of-way.
And that's always your first priority, if you can?
Correct. Yep, and actually, that's my next slide here. It gives a pretty good graphic of that. So you'll notice in the middle there, there's an overlap of 30 feet, give or take, you know, with that existing right-of-way. Also notice, these structures are quite a bit taller than what folks might be used to, so about twice as high as an existing 230 wooden h-frame structure. I mentioned the monopole. Steel monopole is our preferred design. In certain scenarios, we may have to pivot to these lattice tower designs on the far-right. Typically, when we run into these are poor soil conditions. We prefer the steel monopole. Most landowners, especially farmers, prefer the single or monopole structure, but we have to make sure the, you know, the line's going to be stable. So these lattice tower structures are four-legged, and just for reference, they're about 30-foot by 30-foot footprint at the base.
Commissioner.
I notice on part of your proposed route areas, given how much taller these are, some of your maps are rather close to the Moorhead Airport. How does the height of that... Would it differ the closer you are to the airports?
Yeah, it can, and the FAA actually maps out certain restriction zones, so we are aware of that, and we try to route, I guess, around it would be preferable, but yes, sometimes we may be looking at some shorter structures.
Because...
Or different structure types.
You know, if I look at that piece by 336, you're within a half mile of the runway and even the angle on that.
Yep, and it is... It all goes into that routing consideration, and it depends, you know, if there's... If it's the approach zone or where you're at with it.
Which I appreciate that you're aware of it. I just know that they had a regular telephone pole, and there was an accident.
Oh.
Within the last five years.
This one shows, you know, pre-construction through into operation phasing. So we'll begin with surveying, right-of-way clearing, then from there, we stake out our structure locations, pour foundations with anchor bolts, stand up the structures, string the wires, and then after the project does get energized, there is a cleanup and restoration phase that we need to ensure before the project goes fully operational. Finally, into my last slide here. So as I mentioned, we've been through a lot of community engagement. We... It will be an ongoing process here. We do have a live project website that I mentioned a bit ago, you know, a couple rounds of public open houses with a third one planned, and then through the old state commission processes, there's ample opportunities for public engagement, so thank you. I will hang around for any more questions.
Yeah, do we have any questions? All right. Well, thank you for giving us the update.
Yeah, thank you all.
All right, next we have FM Metro Railroad Need Study Presentation.
Talking to this one? Okay, and I talk pretty loud anyway. Well, thank you, Chair, Honorable Commissioners, Administrator Larson and Madam Clerk. We're glad to be here this morning to present this study that we've been working on for a little over two years now, and we're kind of getting close to finishing up, so we wanted to go around and let all the jurisdictions know what we've been doing. So to give you some... A little bit of background, a little over three years ago, BNSF approached several of the jurisdictions in the region, as well as MetroCog, and they talked about doing a study of key rail crossings and other rail-related locations throughout the region. So all parties met, and they agreed for a comprehensive study to assess current conditions and identify future potential infrastructure improvements. And BNSF agreed to pay the local match to the federal funding for the project, so that was a big relief for the local jurisdictions. That's usually 20% for, you know, divided up amongst the jurisdictions, so that was very nice and well-appreciated. HDR began work on the rail study in June of last year, and their local office here drew upon rail expertise from their offices across the US and Canada for rail expertise. And Project Manager Dan Bergerson from the local office of HDR is here, and will provide a slide presentation to give you all an update on Clay County.
All right. Good morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Yep, so as Ben mentioned, we had multiple locations throughout the metro area, 15 in total is what we ended up with, and those were selected by the jurisdictions. In Clay County, we had four locations outside of the Moorhead and Dilworth city limits, and we'll touch on some of those. The key objectives of the study were evaluating existing conditions, assessing potential improvements, and recommending infrastructure enhancements at these locations. We did have quite a bit of public engagement within the study. We had a study review committee, as well as a stakeholder committee with representation from Clay County Engineering, Moorhead Engineering, Moorhead Fire, Moorhead Public Schools, and MinDOT on the Minnesota side, as well as several other representatives on the North Dakota side. We had a pop-up event during the winter warm-up in February at the Rourke Museum in downtown Moorhead and had some pretty good turnout. That's where this photo is from. Got some good foot traffic and visited with interested parties. We also were at the Kiwanis Pancake Carnival at the Fargo Dome in February, as well as having public meetings in both Moorhead and Dilworth, in addition to West Fargo and Fargo in the summer. So the preferred alternatives that we found, this is in Dilworth at... They have the existing Main Street Crossing, which sees high train traffic. There's several tracks that you need to cross there, and we wanted to study and identified a location for an overpass at 14th Street to the east in Dilworth. So in this image, you can kind of see 14th is that yellow highlighted area on the right side, and the overpass typical section is shown as well with a potential four-lane structure for the future, which also connects to the Heartland Trail. Here's just another closer look at that area, 14th. MinDOT does have a potential improvement, looking at a roundabout at the intersection of Highway 10 and 14th, and we've been coordinating with them on just being prepared. This is just a planning study, so there's obviously, you know, quite a few steps to be taken before anything like construction, but it's always good to coordinate on the early side of things. Next up, we have 40th Avenue South on Highway 52 or near Highway 52. This is a skewed intersection with Highway 52 going parallel to the railroad tracks, a short storage area on the west side of the tracks, and just not exactly ideal geometry to work with. The preferred alternative that we identified is widening of the roadway and adding pavement to the surfacing as well, adding a turn lane and shoulders to make things a little bit more bicycle-friendly, as well as updating the railroad warning devices and the layout to meet quiet zone requirements, if that's something desired for the future. We also looked to the south of Moorhead at 50th Avenue. This would be the railroad tracks that run parallel to 20th Street in Moorhead, extended to the south all the way down to 50th Avenue. The preferred alternative here was an overpass, and this area is probably a little bit further into the future for these types of improvements, but that's how far we're looking. And again, pending traffic, potential four-lane structure over that, with some considerations for the existing facility near there.
Is the purpose of that, like a future corridor study, where you basically let people know that something traffic-wise might change in the future?
The purpose of...
Well, I mean, putting this bridge there, overpass there now, it just seems like there...
Yeah, and this...
...aren't there.
I mean, there's certainly considerations, you know, years of considerations, whether it's traffic studies and funding and those types of things that would go into a project like this before it would come to fruition.
I guess usually, once a plan is put in place, what I'm getting at is oftentimes when there are signs put up where it might say "future corridor" or something, that people who might want to invest in that land might know what changes are coming. Is there any consideration to that?
For our study, I don't believe that would be a consideration, you know, at this point.
Chair, if I can add to that a little bit. One of the things that came out of the study that we learned, talking to BNSF, is we were kind of surprised, to be honest, that they were looking at some of these rail crossings that weren't in very urbanized areas, you know, for the most part, that weren't highly trafficked. And they said that the reason that they wanted to look at some of these areas was because of their experience in Texas, and they were very specific about that. And they said that there was so much development and so much growth, and it was... It happened so fast that by the time that growth occurred around some of these intersections, there wasn't room to be able to do any improvement. So they wanted to kind of get out ahead of that and kind of have this on the radar more for their use, so that they know if they see that development starting to happen, that they can be aware of this. And they were concerned, because in Texas, development occurred right up at the right-of-way of the railroad. They didn't have room to work, they didn't have room to make any type of expansion, and in some cases, they had some fatalities. So that's definitely got their attention and why they were looking at these areas. I think that was a surprise for us. We didn't expect that, but that was a pretty candid comment to come from the railroad and say that, you know, they're looking way in the future on this, and that was pretty welcome to hear, to be honest.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So the... I think back on both the... Along the railroad there on 40th and also on 50th. I used to travel out a lot, going... Employer, when I was working, I drove that way all the time, and there was... The stacking of trains was always an issue. I don't know, I think since the Moorhead's rail project was completed, I don't know if that stacking is as big a problem as it used to be. I think the trains are able to... I don't think they have to wait as long to be able to get in and back their way back in, but I wonder if that... If stacking has anything to do with the railroad's interest? Because a lot of the farmers don't want to see those roads blocked by train stacking.
We didn't receive any comments about it during our outreach to the public or stakeholders.
Get in some other areas, but not in these.
Okay.
Okay. So similarly, on 60th Avenue South, this would just be south of 50th on that same, on that same stretch of railroad tracks, a very similar alternative was selected as preferred. So this would be the, what would be called by some, the convent road connects to 52nd Avenue down there, and this one sees a little bit more traffic, having that river crossing would see this happening potentially before the 50th Avenue improvement. And again, here, we're looking at some bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure as well.
And here, and all these, now we're talking about east-west traffic, that the bridge would go up over the railroad tracks, is that what we're talking about here?
And just a little bit of insight as to our approach on the factors we looked at with these improvements and these alternatives. So we just went through the preferred alternatives. There were multiple alternatives for most locations that we looked at, and we sent a survey to the study review committee as well as the stakeholder committee and asked them to prioritize, you know, these different considerations on the screen right now. And what we got back from that survey was high scores for magnitude of project benefits as well as emergency service access, also community impacts and discretionary funding potential, and magnitude of project costs were some of the higher scoring items. So we used that to create a weighted scoring criteria, which we call the multiple account evaluation, and we had other factors such as benefit cost ratio that were considered as well.
So on the far-right column there, the higher the number, the more significant the project becomes?
Yes, that's correct.
I mean, it, there's a bigger demand.
Yep, yeah, the more, you know, the higher the number in any given column, the higher that project scores in that category, essentially.
Hold on, Ken. On that line, so I have a question, we're talking about, no, train traffic. So am I reading that correctly? Some of these is five trains a day, or?
So that would be basically a zero-to-five score, with five being more significant train traffic at these locations?
You know what the current, I'm just curious, what is the current amount of travel on that?
I do have the numbers here. Are you talking 40th or?
No, well, we're going north-south, so whatever those cross, you know, whether it's 40th, you know, 50th or 60th.
The 20th Street track.
Just a curious question. You understand what I'm saying?
Yes, and all that data, actually, the Federal Rail Administration does make public. I just pulled up the 50th Avenue location, and it's listed as eight trains per day.
Okay. Not eighty.
Eight, eight, no zero. And with that, just like to thank you again, and note that the final draft report is available on FM MetroCog's website, if anyone's interested in some leisurely reading.
Well, any, do we have any other questions, Board members? All right, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
All right, Justin, you're, start your lengthy list of items you have for us today.
Yeah. Good morning. So the first item I have is requesting approval of Resolution 2025-32 for Department of Natural Resource Funding. So this is the annual resolution that I bring in front of the board every year, and this is for the art trail that runs from U-15 miles north to the Norman-Clay County line. What this resolution does is it just allows us to be reimbursed for any maintenance activities that we do on the trail.
Mr. Chair, do we currently do any activities of maintenance on that trail?
Not a lot. So Norman moles for us, we do spray every year, L&amp;M sprays for noxious weeds for us, and then in the past three years, I think we've replaced a couple different culverts, so a little bit, but not a lot.
We get reimbursed for anything we spend it?
Correct. The Trailblazers Club does most of the maintenance, and then they send us invoices and we get reimbursed from the DNR.
With that, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-32.
Second.
By Commissioner Bear, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same? Motion carried.
All right, so the next few items I have are a bunch of local road improvement applications. So the first one is going to be for Clay County's LRIP application. So as I indicated to the board a few different times, so the proposed project that we're going to submit an LRIP application for is Cassau 11 from Trunk Highway 336 to Saban. It is a route of regional significance for Clay County, and currently, that road is just too narrow for the traffic that takes it. It's in need of a grading project, and if we're successful, we could get up to $1.5 million through this grant and potentially accelerate when the project would be constructed.
That'd be a good project. So I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution 2025-33.
I'll second the motion.
All right, motion by Commissioner Krabunov, second by Commissioner Mojo. Any further discussion? Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign? Motion carried. Next.
Yeah, so the next item's another local road improvement application, so this one is for Glendon. So since Glendon is not a state aid city, they do require a county sponsorship to apply for this project. So they are applying for local road improvement funds to improve Second Street Southeast and 110th Street South. And then I just put, there's also just kind of, on the resolution, it kind of explains a little bit about the project, but I think it would, good application, and we traditionally sponsored all of these and had really good luck in Clay County.
With that, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-34.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Bear, second by Commissioner Mojo. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign? Motion carried.
Next one is Resolution 2025-35. This is for Hitterdall's Local Road Improvement Application. So they are proposing some water and sewer work as well as paving NP Avenue just north of Cassau 26, tying into State Highway 32. This is the first time Hitterdall's applied for a local road improvement project, to my knowledge, and it looks like a really nice project.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-35.
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Bear. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? I just want to, I just want to point, I think this is great that these local communities are really taking advantage of this. I think it's, and I'm glad that you're working with them and helping educate them on what the possibilities are, so.
Definitely, and then just for your information, I will be bringing one more next week for Dilworth.
All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same? Motion carried. All right.
All right, so next item, I am requesting approval to purchase a plow for Unit 100. So this pickup is used by a road foreman, and a critical piece to have during winter, which obviously we are experiencing right now. The plow would be purchased from Burt's Truck Equipment in Moorhead, and the amount of the purchase would be $11,389, and we do have money in the budget to cover this, and then in the future, this would go into internal service.
So you're looking at getting that in this year's budget yet?
Yep, so we do have in 10, 340, 6604, so it'd be equipment over $500. We do have enough funds to cover this purchase.
All right. One other, one question. Has a road foreman had a plow on their truck normally?
Correct.
We didn't replace that truck, correct?
We did, so we replaced it, but we didn't get rid of the truck, so we still have that pickup.
Step them down.
Yep.
Does that one still have the plow on it?
Correct.
With that, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of a plow for Unit 100 in the amount of $11,389 from Burt's Truck Equipment in Moorhead.
Second.
By Commissioner Bear, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? And so then you will end up then putting this plow on the internal service moving forward?
Correct.
What's the life of those?
I think we go, it's either seven or 10 years, I don't remember off the top of my head, but I think it's 10.
All right, any further discussion?
One other question. With the truck that, the road foreman did have that still has a plow on it, is there another person that drives that home or uses that truck consistently?
Does not drive it home, uses it consistently, yes.
So they'll be using that plow this winter as well?
Correct. And one thing, too, with purchasing the plow for the road foreman, his normal, kind of what he takes care of is south of Highway 10, so especially with that roundabout construction next year, I think the plow get used a ton.
Perfect. All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same? Motion carried. All right, next, request for drone.
Yeah, so I'm requesting approval to purchase a drone from Frontier Precision. So one thing that kind of changed this year was state aid. State aid was kind of sponsoring, a lot of people going to bridge inspection training, which was a two-week course. A lot of people got certified, including myself and a few other staff. So now they kind of shifted, that money was coming from the timber hauler's account, and then they kind of split it up based upon, based kind of how many bridges each county had, and had a minimum, and then you got so much per bridge. So this year, we received $25,755 from state aid, and this money has to be used for anything bridge inspection-related, so load ratings or, like this case, purchasing a drone. So in total, the quote also includes training, the drone, and also an online portal to assist getting all of our bridge inspection staff their Part 107 license, which is required to fly the drone.
Any comments, questions?
One question. Do you have any drones right now under your?
So we have one, so we received one a couple years ago from FHWA. We're having, we had some issues in licensing it, so we never really used it all that much, so this will be the first real drone that we'll use. And then also with this one, we can use it for not only bridge inspection, but it does have capability to survey like gravel stockpiles and... And one other thing, this typical drones, obviously, if you see one at department store for a thousand bucks, they're ran strictly on GPS. This is, if GPS were to ever go down, this also, this will still run, and it's US-made.
I would imagine for this to be used in bridge inspection work, it has to have extremely high resolution.
Absolutely, the camera on this thing is amazing.
Because you're looking for frac, fractures and...
And one thing, unless we borrow like a Snoopert truck from MinDOT, we're not really able to get under bridges very often, and this thing will be a game changer for that.
Yes, Commissioner Ebinger.
Do you have trained operators?
Nope, so this quote includes, I think it's for... Seven people to, it's called the Pilot Institute, but it's basically an online portal with quizzes and videos that helps staff get their Part 107 license.
Good, thank you.
One more comment.
Will this speed up inspections of bridges in the county?
I wouldn't say necessarily speed up. It will help us and just kind of another tool, because they're still going to have to look at all the same things when they're doing bridge inspections, but in the summertime, I think it's something that we'll use as a tool to get under the bridges more.
Expect them better there, not having to wait for a MinDOT Snoopert truck.
Correct.
We did talk about this at the Highway Committee and seemed to fall in, where there's probably more benefits than not, particularly with how we coordinate with the Sheriff's Department also on road closures and communication for folks to get visual on what's happening outside.
Definitely, and one thing that I envision using this for is, like I mentioned earlier, the roundabout project is probably doing like a weekly flyover and just giving an update on our social media pages, just indicating how progress is coming.
You know, the, Commissioner Ebinger, I both know being on the Diversion Authority Board, one of the, I think one of the best reports we get on a monthly basis is the visual from drone footage of all the different things going on, and it really, really is an interesting and good tool, where you can see progress is being made, and it does have really unique opportunities to pinpoint, you know, problem areas, and so I fully support this. I think this is a good investment. Yes, Commissioner Ebinger.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of a drone from Frontier Precision in the amount of $25,122.05.
Second the motion.
I think we have a motion by Commissioner Ebinger, second by Commissioner Mojo. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign? Motion carried. All right, now we're going to get into a couple of final contracts, SAP 014-594-002.
Yeah, so this, speaking of local road improvement, so this was the local road improvement project in the city of Holly. I thought it turned out really well, and residents seemed to really like it. How Incorporated was the contractor. The final amount to be approved is $947,237.09, and then the initial bid was $876,081.38. The reason for the overages is they had a couple soft spots that they had to dig out that weren't anticipated.
More quantities, huh?
Yep.
And these are, these are all paid for by the local community or, and whatever they receive from their...
Yep, so their local road improvement grant is capped at what the bid amount was, so anything additional has to come from the city of Holly, and they did request all of their wheelage tax for this project that almost covers that overage, but they do sign an agreement when they get the grant that basically says they're responsible for anything over the capped amount.
So they had built up their wheelage tax over...
Yep.
Which we allowed them to do.
Correct. Up to seven.
With that, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the final contract voucher for SAP 014-594-002 in the amount of $947,237.09. We have a motion by Commissioner Bear, second by Commissioner Krabunov. Any further discussion on the motion? Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign? Motion carried. All right, next we have contract SP 014-611-005.
Yeah, so this is a final contract voucher for the federal aid project on Cassau 11. This was the concrete pavement rehab and diamond grind project. Diamond Surface Incorporated was the contractor, and the project turned out very well. Throughout the last couple years, this has kind of been a troubled road for us with pavement buckling. Just as an FYI, every time that pavement buckled, it was about $50,000 to replace, plus closing the road down for probably two weeks. So you'll see the final amount to be approved is a little over $100,000, more than the initial bid. So with federal aid, usually with a state aid project, we like to build in a fluff factor of about 5%. Federal aid does not allow you to do this, and we had, in the month of June, before they started, we had a couple hundred-degree days where we actually had more panels buckle, so that's the reason for the overages. So the final amount that I'm hoping, or that I'm looking to get approved is $1,182,055.48, where the initial bid was $1,063,772.98. And then one thing that we also did in this project was seal all the joints where previously none of the joints were sealed, and that's what was causing the pavement to buckle. They would just fill with sand and whatever else, and then as, or as it gets hotter, concrete wants to expand, so didn't have anywhere to expand, so it would buckle.
So hopefully this will alleviate the buckling.
Correct.
Not to have to spend $50,000 at a time.
Correct.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Board's wishes.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion to approve the final contract voucher for SP 014-611-055 in the amount of $1,182,055.48.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Behr, second by Commissioner Krabinoff. Any further discussion?
It's very nicely done, I drive that road often and yeah. It's a lot smoother now.
And I do want to give a little kudos to our maintenance department to, kind of right at the end of the project, on the north side of the bridge, we had a really bad panel that our staff did a really good job at ripping out and replacing.
Lot smoother up and down off that bridge.
Mm-hmm.
And this being a CASA project along with federal funds, this was financed through our five-year plan?
Correct, so there was federal funding plus state aid funding on this project.
So I mean, it's, the overage will slightly impact our five-year plan, but we've also seen some savings in some other projects.
Correct.
More than offset that.
Yep.
All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign? Motion carried. All right, now you guys wanna go to Arlington? Where are you going, Texas?
Arlington, so final board item. So I'm requesting out-of-state travel for the, myself and the Assistant County Engineer, Alex. So this is for the NACE Conference, National Association of County Engineers, which through Minnesota County Engineers Association, we are a full member in NACE and participate. So this year's annual conference is in Arlington, Texas, goes from April 12th to April 15th. I think this is a very valuable conference with many technical sessions from around the US, and it also provides CEUs to help maintain licensure. We do budget for this every year, conference registration is $745 each, flights are about 400, and then board, or hotel stay, I believe is around that $800 mark, which is all within budget. Last year was in Chicago, and just kind of mentioning how it provides value to the county, John Deere was a major sponsor of that event last year, and they found out that we were purchasing three motor graders, and they actually gave us a system that's about $8,000 that kind of helped keep that plow on the road in snowstorms. It's a new system they just came out with, and we got that at no charge.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. Seems like not all of America floods in the beginning of April, so following suit with what we've done before, if there's an issue and we're seeing that we could potentially be flooding, we'll adjust that.
Yep.
Yeah, I, part of where I think there's huge benefit is, you know, we've heard nationwide about how some folks are using beet juice, sun, de-icing components, and given the fact that we're up here and it costs a lot of money to buy that equipment up front, I think that's one of the valuable pieces that you'll continue to hear and see if it does make sense back here. And then the other piece where I think nationally is starting to make sense is there's some pretty enormous studies and projects going on that have to do with ash. Both Commissioner Campbell and I serve on Prairie Lakes, and we've heard about what that MINDOT project is, and you know, I think those are areas where 745 bucks looks kind of cheap when, if we could see some substantial savings by bringing those projects to Clay County, certainly I see the value in attending the conference. Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Ebinger, any further discussion on the motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose the same sign? Motion carried.
Thank you.
You got anything else for us?
No, I think I'm done for this week.
So I want to say thank you for your input and time that you are involved with when we have our State House and Senate bonding committees coming forward regarding our needs and in regards to the diversion project on the Minnesota side. Explaining those important road raises and all those things, it's important for the state to hear that. And so thank you for being willing to hop on those buses and out of your other busy schedule to work on those items.
Yeah, not a problem, and it, the buses are kind of fun because you do get to connect with people, and one of the senators, Ann Johnson, is actually a civil engineer, so it was good to connect with her.
A civil engineer that he also was in her class.
Yep. So, yeah, that was good.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Justin. Well, I guess we can take our break. We're ahead of schedule. I want you all to note that. All right, we are now back in session, we will resume our agenda. Moving on to request approval to purchase two-way radios for the landfill, good morning, Corey.
Morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. My first request for the day is to purchase some new radio equipment for, two-way radio equipment for the landfill. As you know, we had an incident there this summer where a gentleman passed away, and after we discussed what had happened and how our response was, we realized that unless our operators are actually in the equipment, they have no way of communicating with anybody else on the grounds other than cell phones. So I looked into buying handheld radios, couldn't find anything that was compatible with the old system we had out there. So I looked at purchasing new, and the new system would also be compatible with the radios we have at the RRC, so we could interchange them at a time of need. The cost of the new radios is $9,939.53 installed. So that would be my request for the first item this morning.
Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. We did talk about this at SWAC, and I just want, you know, folks to understand that what happened at the landfill wasn't a result of the radio component. We were just addressing how in the future we could address a crisis out there and really felt like this was the most important way with folks going in and out of equipment. To be reachable is the most important piece.
Well, you know, in that kind of remote area out there too, and you have, I just think from a safety standpoint, even for our staff out there working.
Right.
You know, to be outside of their vehicles, if something happens to be able to reach out for assistance is important, so I... And I, and as Commissioner Mojo mentioned, this was talked about at our solid waste meeting, advisory committee meeting, and that got the full endorsement of the solid waste advisory committee to move forward with this purchase. Mr. Chair. Yes, Commissioner Ebinger.
How many units will this be?
Seven total units, two of them will be handheld.
Okay.
Our landfill technician and our operator will each carry a handheld with him at all times. When our landfill tech is not there, our summer help would have a landlord or a handheld also. And then we have extras at the RRC that we could transfer out there if we need to.
Do you have somebody monitoring as a base, just in case somebody gets in trouble?
Yep, yep, there's, the office has one, there's a base unit in the office at all times, plus every, every piece of equipment pickup has one in.
Sounds great.
One, Commissioner Behr.
Can you hear these back in Morehead?
You can hear them in Morehead, but you can't communicate back to them with the handheld I have, I've tried in the past. But as soon as you get to that glendon area, they can start hearing you, yep.
You can hear, but you can't, you can't talk.
I can hear, but I can't talk back, yep. And that depends on weather and that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
On where they're at at the landfill, if they're down in a hole, it makes...
Yeah, different, yep.
But within the, within the footprint of the landfill, there's no issues there.
So then we'd be also replacing the radios in the equipment?
Yes, yep. Those are all analog equipment, they've been there as long as I've been around, so 10 years just about. I'm not so sure they weren't there when my dad was there, so... Serial numbers are 1, 2, 3, 4, I believe.
Time for an upgrade.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Ebinger.
I'll move to approve the purchase of new radios from Midstates for landfill in the amount of $9,939.53.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Ebinger, second by Commissioner Krabinoff, any further discussion? Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign? Motion carried, all right. Next we have a certificate of need request.
Yes, we are renewing our license or permit at landfill, and part of that permit application is a certificate of need letter of resolution. We have gone through this with STANTEC and our landfill technician. Essentially what it is, is an estimate of how many, how much volume we will be using over the next 10 years. We turn that in, and it's monitored, you know, annually by the MPCA and that, and that kind of thing, so... It's an estimate, we're fairly confident it's a high estimate, but we want to, we have to have it as part of our renewal process, so that is, this is the next step, is requesting this letter of resolution.
Commissioner Behr.
Looking years back, do we come close to that estimate, or?
Uh, we're a little bit lighter, we've added a percentage or two increase every year, just, you know, for growth and potential with the construction and demo waste, but no, we don't come close. We're probably 10% below that number.
Mr. Chair, with that, I'll make the motion to approve the letter of resolution for the certificate of need for the landfill permit.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Behr, second by Commissioner Ebinger, any further discussion on the motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same? Motion carried, all right. And your next one is the leachate contract.
Yes, as you know, we have entered a contract with Pelican for the last couple of years to dispose of our leachate. This is just an annual contract that we do with them, it has been looked over by the attorney's office. The only change from last year's contract to this year is there is a $2 per 1,000 gallon increase, so basically .02 cents per gallon, which is still keep it cheaper than, than the Fargo, but we also have Fargo as a backup, so... My request would be to sign the, the contract for the 2026 leachate removal.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Krabinoff, any further discussion on the motion? It's, uh, it certainly is a cost efficient compared to what our previous...
Yep, it saves us 2 cents a gallon, so on 3 million gallons, that adds up in a hurry, so...
Closer price?
Same, same distance as far as hauling. Little prettier drive.
Have we, have we looked at, is there any cities in Clay County willing to take this stuff for us, or no?
No, I requested Morehead, they don't want it, just due to the fact there's some heavy metals in there that they can't handle at this time.
Okay.
Nobody within Clay County, we've tried.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same? Motion carried.
And you're still on schedule. Thanks.
Corey?
And I ask questions.
All right. Looks like we have a, an announcement here this morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, yes, an exciting morning this morning. This board is aware, we've recently had a recruitment process to replace the Public Health Director. We've had several, several interview screenings, and also this board was a part of the interview process for the final candidates. And through that process, we had a candidate that came forward out of that group that had strong leadership, a strong vision for, for that department, where she liked to take things, take that and also a collaborative spirit to work with the staff that we have. And so this morning, I would bring before you Jessica Mickelson for consideration to be the next Public Health Director. In our, in our discussions with Jessica, our county has a promotional, promotional policy which requires a minimum of a 5% promotion increase, not to exceed a maximum price. And so the grade, the grade and step that Jessica would be looking at is grade 26, step 5. With that, I'd yield for any questions.
All right, Commissioner Ebinger.
Mr. Chair, we came to a, to a pretty clear consensus amongst us that Jessica was our pick. We're looking forward to having somebody from within the county family moving ahead and taking over this department. And it's gonna be a pleasure to work with you as we reform our Partnership for Health too. So I'm looking forward to it, and having said that, I'd like to make a motion to accept a recommendation to hire Jessica Mickelson as the Public Health Director, grade 26, step 5, with Backfill and Social Services.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Ebinger, second by Commissioner Mojo, any further discussion on the motion?
No question.
Behr.
The start date December 20th, any way we can push that to January 1st?
Mr. Chair, I think one of the challenges, we've talked about a starting date, you know, it's certainly up to the board's wishes of when they'd like to start. We've not had leadership within that department for a little over two months, and so I know that Jessica's working to prepare, prepare her budget, or, excuse me, prepare her department to leave, and so I think that we're certainly up for the board's wishes.
You know, I think in, in the past when we've hired somebody new to lead a department, not only do we try to get that person in as soon as possible, and oftentimes we end up with a duplicate payment because we want them to take advantage of the person, the predecessor, in most instances, who might be retiring or whatever. And in this particular case, she's not gonna have that ability to have that individual. So I still think, I still think getting her on board right away is, is really important. I do want to comment on, all five of us were able to be part of that interview process, and, and we had, we had really good internal candidates as well as external candidates. And we're fortunate to have selected somebody internally, and I just want to maybe send out a message to the other internal candidates who applied that, boy, they're, they're really good. And I think you, it's gonna show that you have some people within your department that you're gonna now lead that are very talented, and look forward to you being able to take advantage of that talent to, to make things more smooth for you, so... But anyway, we had, we did have that, and, and I think, as Commissioner Ebinger said, I think you kind of rose to the top, and that was encouraging, so... Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. I'm really excited about this, I have had the opportunity to work with you in a variety of capacities, and I will say, it's really interesting and wonderful that your team that you're leaving is here to support you and cheer you on, that speaks of the collaborative nature for the work that you do, and I'm just so excited for you to see where you take this department. You know, I also think it's important for us to take into consideration a department that hasn't had a head for a while because of the absence, and so, you know, I appreciate waiting, waiting, but there will be a cost savings because you are leaving and vacating a position to go to a next. So I will wholeheartedly support this and excited to see the work that you'll do.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ebinger.
Just, as far as the hiring line goes, if we can impose on Quinn to borrow one of his employees, we have the first meeting of the New Partnership for Health, which will be December 10th, or 5th, correct? And it, it'll be here in Clay County. So I'm excited to see you hit the ground running with as much information as we and your staff can give you, and...
So you're basically telling Quinn that, that we're taking his employee for...
Well, he's, he's giving me a thumbs up, which I think is probably insincere. But, yeah, I'm not telling Quinn anything, he's smarter than me.
All right. Anybody else? Oh, we have a motion in a second, any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose the same sign? That's a unanimous yes. Jessica, do you have any comments to make?
Well, I just want to thank Steve and all of the Commissioners for this opportunity, I'm really excited to get started. I know I have big shoes to fill with Kathy's departure, but I'm really excited to work with her dynamic team that she's put together, and it's very bittersweet to leave the amazing group that we have in Social Services, but I'm really excited, so thank you, appreciate it.
All right, congratulations.
And Mr. Chair, if I could just briefly take a second for that, the team that she'll be supervising, and thanking them for, for pulling that, their, their staff together over the last several months and making sure that public health worked as smoothly as it, as it did, so thank them, thank them.
All right. That moves us into our next, um, topic. And that's the 2026 budget discussion that we have on our agenda every meeting now to the end of the year. I know, um, in front of us, um, Mr. Larson has provided us with our non-county 2026 levy requests. And I think he was looking for a final, um, review on that, uh, moving forward before we do go to our final levy. And, and was wondering if there were any, uh, questions regarding those moving forward. I know that, uh, Commissioner Krabnoff brought to my attention that there is a slight, uh, difference in the historical and cultural society. Uh, the, the amount it was reduced to was 219,235. Is that correct, Commissioner?
That is correct.
Not 218, but 2, 219, 235.
Yeah, they said, uh, same as last year.
Commissioner Abinger.
Yes, I, I noticed we, we, this reflects the reduction from the $362,600, or $362,690 request from Lake Agassiz Regional Library was reduced to, uh, 349,209. The, uh, last time we discussed this, there was a request, I look into what the consequences of that $15,000 shortfall will be to Clay County. All the funds that we pay are reflective of a formula that was devised 30 years ago. And, uh, the library has got a budget that's running very close. There's not a lot of room in it to cut. So if we don't pay the additional $15,000, which is half of the, we're paying half of the original increase to the ask. Um, I asked what items are going to need to be, uh, limited. As it looks now with the, with the union requirements that non-union employees, uh, receive cutbacks prior to any union employees, the obvious quickest generation would be to close the Ulan facility right now, which is open three days a week, two hours a day. That would still leave $5,500, uh, for the Barnesville and the Holly, uh, locations to eliminate, uh, positions. And the per hour at each of those locations, Barnesville, the elimination of one hour of employee time over the year would save 1,184. And Holly would be 1,288. So they would try to sit there and figure out between the other two locations where the cuts need to be made. I do not like the current formula and there are other members, signatories that don't like the current formula. It's complex and it was obviously designed to address some needs 30 years ago that have changed. And we have already resolved to address that in the upcoming year to be more reflective of reality. However, having said that, I would ask that we avoid these, these cutbacks to services in Barnesville, Holly and Ulan and go ahead and pay the additional 15, 15,000 to meet the shortfall that, uh, is currently showing a Clay County budget.
Did we, um, did we ever ask or discuss the, um, the library's reserves and what, what those reserves look like? I, I can't remember if we had that discussion or not.
I can't, I can't remember what they are, but I, in looking at it a month ago, we've had a lot of figures run through. But in looking at it a month ago, it is not excessive and it'll probably be tapped this year with the cuts as we're all experiencing on state and federal funding that normally comes through. And some of the additional demands, I anticipate that if grants or other funding aren't located, they're probably going to need to go into the reserves. And just like us, you don't want to, the next few years, we don't know what, what they hold, but it doesn't look like it's going to be a particularly, particularly easy time fiscally for any entity. And this is not a, a place that's replete with funding.
I just, I, I was just wondering if the formula that you talk about, Dave, if that, if that formula, just automatically, um, takes the budgeted needs of the library board and distributes that based on the formula before there's any consideration of reserves being taken? Or if, if reserves have been part of the discussion and built in to their budget?
Since I've come there, it's been a little disturbing to me, but they've always made it work. The budget shows a deficit at the start of the year. Uh, expenditures are going to exceed income. And that's another thing I think needs to go into factoring a new formula. Leaving something untouched for 30 years is just not what I think. I mean, it varies because of the components that are in it. Library use, membership within a geographical range. But I, 30 years ago, they had to take a poll of people in three or four of the libraries for a two-month period to determine part of their construction of, of the, of the, uh, formula. And this, I think, was done to not have to, have to do that every year. As a result, it takes no, I, no, um, reckoning of the actual cost of operations into the formula, what it takes to run the facility. So I think it's time to, to redo it. I've been, was elected again as president of the library board for, for next year. And that is our primary, uh, we want to get it done by budget, you know, we want to get it done by June. So that we have an idea of what we can send out to everybody and are able to justify it and get a consensus from the, the signatories.
Mr. Krabnoff.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so I do support their work. I, I guess you should, you're talking about a new formula and I, I don't quite understand what that means. And maybe I should, but I don't. And, um, so if they have a new formula, where might we land next year?
That's a good question. Um, it's going to be based on cost of operations. And I think our costs are considerably less than, than many others that are involved, but that's something we're going to have to look at.
I mean, is, uh, formula, is, is it showing inequity to Clay County versus other places or?
Not, not as much as it is over in our neighbors Becker County and Detroit Lakes. There seems to be a real, uh, differential there. And they are the only signatory and they may have approved the, the original ask. I've not gotten that information yet as of last Tuesday. It was still a question up in the air, but, or last Thursday. But, uh, all the other signatories have approved the original ask.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, if, uh, I may, I just pulled up the preliminary budget requests that they provided. Uh, and, uh, it's anticipated that, uh, the, they will be utilizing 1.1, 136,566 dollars of fund balance, uh, this year, which was an increase of $36,566 over last year.
So does it say what their reserve balance is?
Uh, I believe, but Mr. Chair, I think that we had a conversation earlier in the budget process that they were right around 2 million. Uh, their, their overall budget is, is 4.4 million proposed next year, which would be roughly five months of, five months of operating.
Mr. Mojo.
Thank you. Just a clarification though, it is anticipated that they will have substantial, um, A and E, um, purchases, correct? Or furniture purchase, sorry, not A and E, purchase or purchases for the new site?
I believe those are not. I believe it's, those are capital items that have already been budgeted for.
I thought in the negotiations, that was something that came forward, that it, it looked like they were going to have to purchase their own as opposed to as part of the entire project.
Yeah, they're going to have to purchase the, for their offices.
Right, but that wasn't something that was budgeted in, in 25. So I mean, going to, are they purchasing that out of reserves? They would have.
I think there was, I think there was an item already budgeted for it.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mojo.
Thank you. It is also likely with the reallocation that Clay County will see an increase?
Unlikely? I don't know. It's, it depends.
If Becker sees a substantial decrease, somebody, I mean, that's going to have to filter through. And so I'm just trying to figure out a way for our budget to step into what that looks like.
I think, uh, that, it goes to, you know, Paul's question too. I, the uncertainty of, you know, anytime that you're dealing with a new formula, typically when there's a request, somebody thinks that they're being harmed by the current formula and want it changed, right? I mean, that's typically why you would have somebody advocating for a change in a formula. And in this particular case, I, you know, I think the bigger your, your county is, you know, um, the bigger the target.
At the county population and the number of people who have a card, who are using the facility, now a major factor in it. I think what we're going to be looking at is usage and cost of running the operation. That's going to enter into, uh, identifying some deficient areas, some, some locations that don't have enough, uh, transactions to justify continuing to fund them. And I don't know how that will impact us in the long run. I don't know how that will impact Becker County. They've got a couple of places that really are not real busy. And it may be a reckoning time to where, where we start looking at cutting, but I don't know that yet. This is a resolution made by the board and it's not been entered in. There's been no speculation other than the fact that the cost of operation has to be a major consideration in this. And it is not at this time.
It should be the only consideration of it is the cost of operation.
Mr. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Abinger, the, any changes that would happen in 26? But they, the new request, if there was a change, wouldn't be implemented until 27. That's correct, correct?
Any change in the formula?
Right, yes, okay. Why we want to get it done by June.
Well, and I, you know, I, I do know, I, I serve on a couple of other boards and I do know that there are some, um, there are some concerns maybe between, um, Becker County and the city of Detroit Lakes, for example, on, on some of their, how they feel that their portion of cost share works. You know, I don't know how that's going to translate into, in falling down on, uh, Clay County. We don't know the answer to that. And I don't think we will know it until you get into those formal discussions on. Certainly I think it's our responsibility to pay our, our fair share of, of those types of things. Well, we've got a request by Commissioner Abinger. What's your other board's feelings on that?
Uh, I was, I was going to ask, where are we at on the preliminary?
Uh, so based on the, the adjustments that you as a board agreed to last month, or last week, we're at 4.64%.
And that is, that, no, that's net.
That's net.
When, when we listen and compare it to other counties, they're not, they don't talk net. They talk, so, so our, without net, ours would be what, 5.7?
Probably be right in the, we got 5.7 range, yes. I think we're at 1.12 of net growth.
And that's, that's 5.7% of our projected.
Correct.
2025. Anything else, Commissioner Bear?
Just switching topics there.
I think.
Well, you know, and I guess in, in fairness, maybe, maybe, maybe we can look at whatever anybody else might have too, and that might have an impact on. You know, in fairness, if we, you know, can we find someplace else where we can?
Find some funds for this?
Savings, uh, help offset that.
I, I think if we go down the economic development with the EDA for cities in Clay County, if we reduce those to zero, just because it's not the greatest year to be putting out more money and maybe directing some of that money over to the library to cover that 15,000 for this year. And then hopefully Dave can get the library reformulated and bring that in a little tighter. And if, if it is cutbacks, not closures to all of our tech libraries, long-term to save money there, I think that's where I'd find the funds, out of those four EDA cities. And then, yes, move that, move 15,000 over to the library and then save the other five, just the way the budgets are lining up for this year. They haven't received it before, so I don't, if, if we give it to them now and then have to pull it away next year, being 2027 is going to be even a harder year to budget for, everybody's saying? I think long-term, that would be the right decision. And then hopefully we rein in the library, give David a year to rein in the library.
Well, to that though, part of the reason we justified to the Minnesota entities hauling back the EDC is there was a gap in Minnesota work that was happening. You know, I, I disagree. I think if anything else, we should bolster what our smaller communities are doing. And even in discussion with Dilworth and Barnesville, they said that's, um, substantial change that can happen with that amount, even if it's minor. I think the piece about the library that is scary is we are part of a group there. And so if we start seeing, um, you know, if we pull out of that agreement, then other boards go back to that and reallocate things, we might see larger cuts to Clay County than we're already anticipating. You know, Dave, you're part of that. And so you sit around those discussion boards. That's where I'm, you know, concerned, concerned. Part of it is, you know, I, I think that while 4.64 is not necessarily where in our brains we would love to be, given the fact that we thought we were at 22% in February, I think we've done a fantastic job finding savings and getting critical about it. So if you look at what we paid with the chamber and the EDC last year, um, 185,000, what we've got allocated through the county or the city EDAs and the EDC, that's 78,000. So that still is even a reduction of what, what they were doing there.
I, I feel it's, it's easier to take something away that we haven't been, we haven't given out yet in case long-term we have to pull monies back next year. Commissioner Krabnoff, did you have a comment?
Well, I want to, I want to go back to, um, just my opinion on, on the, um, Lake Agassiz. I think, um, if everybody else is owned up to the current rate, I would be in favor of, um, you know, putting that 15 grand back into that. Uh, I too, uh, feel like we've done a really, really good job on, um, working our, um, fund balance down, or not our fund balance, I'm sorry, levy down to, uh, I'll call it reasonable area. I have a question. On the EDA part, can I go back, can someone remind me what was stated in the, the, um, resolutions that were sent to us a couple of years, uh, a couple of weeks ago from the, um, Dilworth, Holly? And, and that was on the dispatch, right? And is that then, the net of that, is that a greater cost to us?
Yeah, so, um, I think, I think the, um, and I'm not sure if all four cities have acted on it yet, but I think a couple of them have. And they basically said that they want to, over a three-year period, eliminate, um, paying for any dispatch services. That, that, um, that part, if that's done, that does go on, back on to the county levy. That, that, that part, if that's done, that does go on, back on to the county levy.
And I assumed you did. I wanted to make clear.
Yeah.
And do we know a dollar amount in that? Is there any way of?
Well, the tot, the total amount that they're projected to pay this coming year is $202,000. So if you take a, take a quarter or third of that in 27, we would, that would be in that, that area. Again, with the understanding that there's probably gonna be an increased cost that'll also be associated with that.
I, I think, I think, I think that in itself is down, you know, obviously they, those small cities have told us what their intentions are. And, you know, we need to be prepared for what those intentions are. But I also think that it might become a much bigger thing than that, that hasn't been discussed yet. That, you know, I guess I'm not ready to talk about that today, but.
Yeah. I think, I think, Mr. Chair Commissioners, we, we have been told that, and we've seen some news articles. My understanding is that the representatives from the four cities, at some point, are going to be coming before this board to, to make that formal presentation of the resolutions.
Well, with that being something in the future, I guess for me, I'd still support the EDA and work with the, or work with Lake Agacy for that increase. However, I, how that would work in the future, I think, depending on the responses on, on dispatch, may change things in the future.
Yeah, I had a discussion about that dispatch piece with someone in leadership in, in Barnesville. Not current leadership, but past. And, you know, I, I think we have to be very clear with them about what services would drop off. And I understand you don't wanna talk about it today, which is fine. I'm not going into that. But, you know, it, it does need to be stated to other residents of the cities, what, what those components pay for and what services, is it non-emergency? I don't know what it is, but what will go by the wayside? And if that's, if that's something that folks are willing to, to address. Those are very, very important conversations that not only we need to have with the city councils, but also I think residents just aren't aware what the gap would be.
Well, I, I, I think that request might lead to other requests too, coming forward. That's gonna be really, it could, it could really, really change the dynamics of how dispatch on this side of the river is gonna have to be funded. And it, it's concerning, it's concerning to me on how that all pans out. Like I said, I'm not ready today, but I've been doing some numbers and, and I think ultimately, who it really impacts the most is our rural people and our farmers. Are gonna see the, see the significant cost shift. If, you know, so I think we're gonna have to be very careful on that. I, I, I have a, I really do appreciate Commissioner Bear's comments on, this is new funding, that is this the right year to be doing it? It's, it's new funding taking from an old economic development allotment. It's, it's basically redistributing the 185,000 that we had in previous budgets in a different way. So it's, from, from a technical standpoint, it's not new money, but where it's going is new. And I think that, I think that might be the argument there of, is this the, if we were to ever have to back off, you know, why would you give something if you're gonna end up having to back off it? That's, that's, that's my concern. I don't, I don't disagree that those, those different local communities, I, I don't disagree that they wouldn't put the dollars to good use. I don't think we would even provide them with the dollars if we didn't think that they'd put it to good use. You know, so.
So is this a discussion or are we doing a motion?
Well, it's just, it's, it's discussion, but I mean, the floor is open. If somebody wants to move a change, or make a motion to change something, to keep it as it is.
Then I will, if that's.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I, I'd like to make a motion then to, is it, whatever, the 15,000?
13,481.
Thank you. That amount be put back in, or excuse me, be part of our giving to the Lake Agacy Regional Library for 2026.
Second.
So the, the motion basically is to restore back the funding to its original request.
Which is 362,690.
Yes.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Any further discussion? I'm not sure where the board stands. I think we'll do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Kravenhoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Mojo? Commissioner Campbell?
No.
Commissioner Bear?
No.
Commissioner Ebbinger?
Yes.
All right, so that motion carries and that, so that 13,041 is put back in.
Then I would like to make a motion to pull the EDA money from the four rural Clay County cities for this year and maybe look at it next year, but just this year with what we're gonna be looking long-term. It's easier to pull it back now than later, so I'd, I'd like to make a motion to pull the EDA money out to the four rural cities.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Is there a second? I will second the motion. Chair doesn't do it very often, but I'm gonna do it today just for the sake of discussion. I know we've discussed it, but I just, I think in fairness, it's worthy of anything, any other comments that we make.
I, I think it, if we're prudent, I, I think the four cities would use that money. I think they would turn that money around and make even more money. But just for us to fund that, I, I don't think this is the appropriate time for us to be funding that. That's all I have to say.
I'll ask for a roll call vote, Chair. All right, any, I just wanna make sure we're done with discussion here first. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'll just bring it up. I, I still support it. I just go back to our EDA meetings and the enthusiasm I saw from the folks. And we build up Moorhead, I just, I, I just think it's in us. We should be building the opportunities for these communities. And I, I, I'm one that does believe that if we help them, it helps them more and that creates more development and that brings more county taxes then, so. Is there a roll call yet? That was discussion, I guess, but.
Did you have another comment?
This is a real conundrum for me. Until I was elected commissioner, my entire district's in City of Moorhead. I didn't know what was going on out in the county. And I've made it a point to learn. And there's some people trying really hard out there to grow, grow their community. And they're not part of Moorhead. They're, they've been out of the partnerships a lot of the time when things come through. That, that, in my opinion, explains a lot of the lack of information they have about the value of the, of the Red River Regional Dispatch Center to their communities. They've gotta be brought in. They've gotta be given the opportunity to understand what the services are. And we've gotta be willing to show that we're, we're willing to play the game with them. We've been doing this for Cass County and for, for Fargo, and we've left our own people out there unaddressed. So, and by the same token, it's real hard when you're looking at potentially critical shifting of the property taxes onto the county. It seems we're getting it from both sides now, from the towns underneath us and the state up above us. It's difficult to, to go into this with a collegial collaborative feeling. So I don't know. I'm, I'm not even sure how to vote right now. But I do know that we've, we've been scrupulous in trying to cut where it's reasonable. And I, I, I think maybe there's a valid point that, given the nature of what the, what it costs for us to work with the cities in rural Clay County, we may need to stand back and, and, and see where the appropriations go after we settle some of this situation with the dispatch center. Again, it doesn't seem fair though, because these folks have been trying hard and they, they have a right to get some county support.
So again, I wanna, I wanna, are we finished? Okay, okay. So I, I, I agree. I don't disagree for one moment that these entities wouldn't put this money to good use. I, I don't, that's not the issue at all to me. And, and I'm really thankful that, for this, for this board, for really taking a look at how to reinvest that original 185,000 that we committed to economic development in Clay County. You know, with, with, with the difficult times that we're having and, you know, we still brought in a lobbyist for the important work that we need to be done, that we're hoping that we can get some assistance from the state. But, but ultimately, my decision on this one is gonna fall into the fact that none of those four entities even asked for this. It was something that we, we gave as a, as a different way to, to maybe invest that original 185,000. But from my standpoint and also trying to do, and I talk about it all the time, helping that little retired person living off social security, paying property taxes, how can we adjust and how, how can we help that person? And every dollar matters when it comes to that. So I, that's why I second the motion and that's why I support this, because in this particular instance, this is money that nobody even requested. And under these trying times, when we're trying to, and we're looking at 2027 as even being worse than 2026, how can we, how can we do some things now? I, do I, do I think they'll do good with the money if we gave it to them? Absolutely. That's not even the issue. Not to me, anyway, so.
Also not to me, Mr. Chair.
Pardon me?
Not, that's also not the issue to me.
Okay. All right, any, any further discussion? All right, I think we are asked for a roll call vote on this.
Commissioner Kravenhoff? Commissioner Mojo? Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Bear?
Yes.
Commissioner Ebbinger?
All right, that motion, that motion carries. Do we have any further discussion on items? Steve, do you have anything else that you wanted to bring forward to us today? I, I know you provide, I had asked for a breakdown on the, basically the final 2025, 2024 revenues over expenditures, which I think it's pretty close to final now.
Yeah.
I don't know if we're, I don't know, I think, did you send that to everybody? I know.
I have not, no.
Okay, okay, so maybe, maybe we can have that in preparation for the.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, in anticipation of AMC meeting and the following meeting would be our Truth in Taxation evening meeting. I am trying to work with Lori. It's a quick turnaround this week, but tried to have a, a levy sheet, a expense, expense revenues of where we are this year, the HAFs and sales tax, and then the fund balance document for the board as part of this discussion on December 2nd.
I have one question. Do you want us to finalize the, this sheet, our non-county levy request, or?
Well, Mr. Chair Commissioners, I think that today, what, what we wanted to do is, I wanted to do is bring forward the, the actions that are on this board have been, been things that you guys have taken on throughout this budget process. And so I wanted just to make sure that the numbers that we had from your previous discussions matched what Lori had in the budget. And so we'll make the, we'll make the changes, make the changes that were brought forward today and that'll be part of, part of the levy document next week.
So Steve, so all of these external requests, were any of these, were any of these voted on independently by the board?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, my, my recollection is that you did vote to, to not fund, not fund the two different red items here, the, the rural routes and, and the cultural diversity. I, I think the other ones were discussions that we, that we've just had as part of the, the budget process.
Okay, and, and so as it's presented with those two motions that were made today on those two line items.
I think we did specifically vote on the EDA package.
Oh, we may, well, I'd have to look back on that for sure. Commissioner Mojo, Mr. Chair.
Should, question to Mr. Chair, should we go through line by line after we get this next week and vote on each one of these?
Well, I, I, you know, I guess what I would do, because it, because we voted them in the preliminary levy, we're gonna assume that they're in unless, unless there's.
If they change.
Discussion and a motion to take it out like we just did today. You either add it back or you take it out. And I, you know, I think every, every board member will have that ability to, you know, to do that moving forward. At this, at this point in time, I just, I wanna know if there were, if there was any entity of these where they were told that they would receive the dollars.
Uh, no.
Formally, from a formal.
No, from a.
Only stand.
From a, in, from a formal standpoint, I have told, we have told two entities they would not be receiving funding. About, and we've told them, we've told other entities the adjustments the board have made, has made. But, but that, the final, we always tell, tell each of these departments that the final decision isn't made until you guys establish the budget, so.
All right, so I, so at this point, I, I think moving forward, unless, I mean, these numbers, I think our administrator has asked, are we good with these? And at this point in time, we've made, we've talked about two. And unless there's something else, I think they'll just move forward as, as being part of the final levy proposal. There's, I mean, that, that doesn't happen until, you know, later in December, but. All right, do we have any, anything else on budget? If not, we'll move into our committee reports. And I believe I'm gonna start with Paul today.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Going back to Tuesday, the, last Tuesday, we had our, we were all part of the interviews and then late in the afternoon, that evening night, I did attend the Clay County Board of Adjustments. Just talk a little bit about that. That was a request of a variance for the elevated dispensary down in Baker. And the request was our cannabis ordinance, we have a 500-foot setback to residential. And he was requesting to go down to 250 after the room was full of, I'd say around 50 people, mostly all from Baker, which has a population of 50 people. And, and the township was against it, as well as some local landowners around it. So anyway, long and short, unanimously went forward to, to deny that request. So in order for him to do anything there, he had to hold that 500-foot setback. On Wednesday, we had a, a team's meeting again with our lobbyists, moving forward with the non-secure facility, our strategies with that. Again, working toward the, working with the governor. The other thing that was mentioned is getting out, working with the people, with their senator house, people that were part of the tour, or were invited to the tour, but were not able to make it. So anyway, working on that. And then also. And then also, just put it out there, I think was mentioned maybe last week, but that Steve, myself, and Steve Summers from Solution will be reporting and giving an update and getting an updated resolution for the Minnesota Indian Affairs Conference going on in Morton, Minnesota next week. So, that's on that. In that afternoon, on Wednesday, later after that, at noon, I had the Finance Committee meeting for the Historical and Cultural Society. Again, that final budget was, is going to be, their final budget will be being taken this Wednesday and everything, and again, taking the figures that we're allowing them. And, let's see. Then on Thursday morning, I was part of a team's meeting with the Rethink Mental Health and Suicide Coalition, really a good meeting with in-depth information. We had a presentation by Chandler Essling-Ger, from the Executive Director of Fiber Moray Coalition in Homelessness. She shared her insights on the social detriments of health, these positive, negative impacts. And the reason it's good to understand these determinants is that, you know, where people are, their environment they live in, wherever they were born in, whether it's positive or negative, it has influence on later year outcomes. And, and those are the things, if whatever we can do to make those positive effects in our community, move people onto these native places, environments, I was going to say not places, but environments, the better off we're going to be as a community. Right now, we, as, I think it's a number we've heard pretty much for a little while here, we have roughly an estimate of about 1,055 homeless people identified in our community every day. And, and of that, about 600 of those are students. And then after that, after Chandler got done talking about that, Amy Rico from Moray Schools, and Amy works under a federal grant within the schools. And anyway, right now, Moray School System has 346 kids living in homelessness situations. That doesn't mean they don't have shelter, but that does mean that those kids don't have a permanent, permanent place, they're moving from place to place, finding a way to get through them or their families. And, and the scary number to me is that of those 346, 81 of them are unaccompanied. So these are mostly kids under 18 that are out on their own, trying to make that way. So, anyway, Amy did a good job. These, the, the good, good news about the 81, they're in school and it's all, and she'll talk about so strongly, the only way we get these kids out of these situations is through education, so.
Paul, can I ask a question?
Yes.
So, I mean, those are serious numbers.
Yeah.
I, I'm wondering, how, how do those, do, do they compare those numbers from previous years? It, it, so, so like, are there trends going up or, and, and, or, you know, we, for a long time, in all of our boards, for years, we wanted to end homelessness.
Yeah.
And, you know, and what are we doing and what's working and what isn't working and what are the trends? You know, so it's, it's staggering to hear these numbers. Is it, is, is it something that's showing a continued rise?
Well, I'll, I'll just go off and, and maybe Dave will have a little more insight being part of that coalition, but as I understand it, the, the bigger number, the area number, the thousand number, I think that number has, is growing. She indicated that too. However, how much, I don't know. I know specifically to Amy in the school, that number is definitely growing.
Yeah, I, I recall the issue of homeless students in Morehead Schools came up back when I was still a police chief, so that's more than 18 years ago. But my understanding is there was a problem tracking it. In the last several years, there's been more of a concerted effort to identify, provide services to, transportation to, these kids, and that number keeps getting bigger every year. What is disturbing, and I missed, I was at, at another meeting and had a conflict, and I missed the presentation, but again, as, as Commissioner Kravenoff indicated, what's really disturbing are a number of these kids that are on their own. And it's not the ones we can track in school and provide some services to, although their services are inadequate, it's the ones we don't know about. And a lot of challenges in this issue, and I, I spent 25, 30 years aware of it and working on it, and I don't think it's really getting much better. There's a lot of effort going into it, but we keep, we keep trying to address these things and, and we can't seem to get on a specific track on it, and we need to.
Yeah, I just want to end on a positive note. You see commitment out there, people trying, that's.
Well, I, yeah, I don't.
And I think they work out, they're, they're doing the best they can, so, yeah. That's what I have for my report.
Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. Last week, I also was part of the interview process, excited to have the opportunity to take part in that. I attended the Board of Adjustment meeting that was reported on by Commissioner Kravenoff as well, and then also attended the Planning Commission meeting. We did have a full house for both of those items, continuation discussion on some of the points that had come out on one of the hearings from the Board of Commissioners earlier in the morning. We did have a request for conditional use permit with the Wild Rice Watershed District, a construction of a Rock Arch Rapids in Hagan Township that did pass. The concrete holdings for Simonson LLC was IUP piece, that was for the concrete batch plant in Kurtz Township. Kurtz Township was there and they were not in favor of the request, that did, was denied at a five to three vote. The Eckries had an interim use mining permit on their parcel in Holly Township that was approved, and then a interim use permit for a dog boarding kennel in Scree Township, Lux were doing that, that also was approved, and then a conditional use permit in Park Township for a conditional use permit to convert an accessory use into a principal use. The other component was they moved a recommendation to reappoint Ashley Hang to the Planning Commission, her second term. Matt will be bringing that forward to this board's action. The next day, I attended the Red River Basin Commission, we had a Joint Powers Committee meeting, a good presentation from the Water Institute, I believe. Sorry, I'm pulling that up. Just a minute. Sorry. Good discussion on all that is happening in the other counties, you know, as we move forward. Now's the time where we see a lot of permits at the watershed level, so talked a little bit about what each one is seeing in their own area. I don't know why the agenda's pulling, not pulling up. I, so yes, it was Brian Feuter with the Red River Retention Authority, good presentation on that and the work that they do throughout the basin. And then we had the Clay County Legislative Planning Meeting, good follow-up on, on the developments with the Senate tours and who we're working, working with and strategy moving forward. I also had the opportunity to attend the AMC Environment Natural Resources pre-conference call, that was with General Government, I wasn't sure, were you on that one?
No, I was not.
Okay, so basically, there's several different proposals that kind of overlap with General Government as well, wanting to make sure that we had an opportunity to talk about that. You know, I, I really do appreciate what AMC is doing there to make sure that they're understanding where both policy committees are as we move forward for the conference. All of that information will be discussed and voted on at your committee meeting. Thursday morning, then I attended the SWAC Committee meeting. We did have a good presentation on the pumpkin recycling pieces, and then Commissioner Campbell will have his update on Prairie Lakes, and obviously, we already took action on the, the one piece moving forward. And then, that afternoon, we attended the, I attended the Metro-Moorhead Clay County Joint Powers Authority meeting. We did have a action on a property, there, there's, are three eminent domain trials that will be happening in December, had updates on the property acquisition components. And then we had a closed session to discuss some of those pieces and approved, we had three reimbursement, relocation reimbursement requests, one was pulled, and then we did vote to approve one. And then we approved the 2026 farm management or farmland lease rates, it stayed the same, and then looked at an amendment, amended flowage easement language. Good actions happening there. And then Friday, we had, or, I'm sorry, Thursday, I also had the MetroCog Policy Board meeting. We had lots of presentations on studies, they have all of those updates on their website. Thank them for coming about the railroad piece, and we did have a discussion at the end. There was about $62,000 in approved and documented approved expenses for the bike ped counters that happened in 2024, and Federal Highway in North Dakota DOT moved the goalpost on what those requirements were, and throughout the last year have denied the reimbursement request on that. So we had a long discussion about how MetroCog will pay their bills because we don't have a reserve on that, and even though there was documented approval, rules can change, apparently. So there'll be more to discuss on that and more to figure out. We did have a substantial reduction in our dues based on the work, the planned workload as you see on our outside agency pieces. Those are all funding based on formulas for what the projects are, and Clay County had a substantially reduced one based on planning for 2026, but it does beg the discussion, I think you might talk about this at collaborative and when you have other pieces, is what does happen when federal funding falls through on pre-approved pieces for agencies like that? So we will be having probably meetings with all of the administrators from every entity on that going forward, but just so you know, that happened. And then yesterday, I attended the Lakeland Mental Health Center Board of Directors meeting. We had good updates from the collaboratives. Otter Tail had a great update on the bar programming, which is, shoot, reducing risks, something, bridging, anyways, Minnesota, Clay County has it in our schools, what is that?
Yeah.
Anyways, it's a great program that works with addressing risks and addressing reductions with those risks, and so they were able to show how they were seeing successes in their school districts. So Clay County obviously has that in ours, and so we can agree on, on that. We have probably the least amount of open positions that we've ever had over there, and obviously, those open positions directly affect the revenues, so financially, they're on track to make up some strides that were lost earlier in the calendar year, but we did have a long discussion about how some gaps in services were happening at Alexandria's office, we'll figure that out, but particularly for them, the unknown with paid family leave implementation, and, you know, the state obviously will cover the, the expenses of the employees, but that will directly affect revenue, and so we're just trying to figure out what that means. And then we did have a discussion, since we are self-insured, we did need to replenish the account because we did have some high claims, and I think it's important for this board to know that we do have a board-designated fund that has a high value in it, and instead of coming to the board, boards, all the different counties, we will be pulling money from that board-designated fund to offset those pieces. So we made a motion to move $300,000 that would get us up into the black and then cover, we're thinking six to eight months of the next calendar year, and that's what we will do to continue to fund that piece. I believe that concludes my reports.
Thank you, Commissioner Baer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was, on the 18th, I was also at the interview process, and then Thursday, November 20th, I went to the kickoff for the Clay County Heartland Trail Task Force, where we had an overview presentation on what the Heartland Trail in Clay County looks like and how it's come all the way to now and all the meetings they've had previously. We reviewed the, the task force and the members of it, and I have to get ahold of a couple other townships to make sure they're aware of the task force has been together, but we also had the discussion of this, designating a state trail or a regional trail, and I, they're looking for a way to go with that, which, which, which way to do that would be the next step, and it comes down to funding and maintaining the trail. I was wondering if Metro, if we could get MetroCog to come to a meeting in the next month and give us a presentation and let, let us all have that discussion, because I, there's pros and cons to each of them, and I don't, the whole trail doesn't have to be a whole state trail or a regional trail, you can have pieces of each, and I believe that's, that's the best route, like when you're going through towns, let that be a regional trail, but out in the country, maybe you have that be a state trail, as long as the towns are willing to take on the regional part of it.
MetroCog did talk about that at our board meeting, they are having those discussions. It's more of a global strategy on what makes sense for funding pieces. I think there was some unknown with, with, again, there are great state trails around the Alexandria area, and there's great, you know, whatever.
Regional trails in Otter Tail.
So I think they're all trying to figure that out. What the unknown is, is how the current legislative ask plays into that and not wanting to disrupt what the allocation from the state trail piece is, but it's my understanding that they will be having those meetings in the next four months with the individual entities, but maybe.
I think if we could bring them here, because we want, we want to have that direction by, we're going to meet maybe in January, February, it wasn't decided, but we're going to get to the first of the year, but if we, if our group can get that figured out, where, where we stand on it, I think that'd be great. I think if we reach out to them and see if they come beginning of the year.
I would certainly appreciate.
Give us an update on it and let us.
I know we did have a presentation here a while back on, on.
On, yeah.
But I don't, you know, I don't think we got really into the weeds on it in terms of.
On making, we had, having Clay County Commission make a recommendation on where we stand on that.
And I, I think part of the challenge is the gaps in, in what the service area is, right? MetroCog is not in the business of figuring out what the best financial route is.
Yes.
Can just advise with the plan.
Yeah.
So if they don't advise, I guess I have a question. Who would we go to on that?
I mean, they, they would advise us, which, I mean, they, they put both of them out there and say the pros and cons of each trail, but for, like, running through Clay County, rural Clay County.
Yeah.
It would be, I believe it would be us making that decision or the townships. Now, if the townships want to take on the regional part of it and do everything that takes the regional trail, then, and Clay County as a commission just walks away from that and let the cities and the townships take care of that, then we can be a supporter. But if we, if the townships don't want to take on the regional trail part and want to have it state trail, or if we want to have it regional, there's, there's pros and cons on how it's, how it's maintained and who funds to build them.
Well, exactly, the upfront cost.
Upfront cost.
And the maintenance.
And the maintenance.
Yeah, those, those are the two differences between state-run versus regional.
Yeah.
And I, and again, I think it's, that's where Commissioner Baer is going with this. Ultimately, should we.
We should, we should decide.
Giving a preference to.
Yes. So then I have some direction at those meetings instead of my own preference. Anyways, if we would build 32 miles of trails today, it would cost about $51 million. So that was that meeting. And then on Friday, I was down in Fergus Falls for Partnership for Health with Commissioner Ebinger, where we had, this was our last Partnership for Health meeting with all. Ebner, where we had, this was our last Partnership for Health meeting with all four of the counties. And we went down through the grants, on the splits of grants. We're going to split all the grants except for three, and the other, two of the main grants will be, will, they'll still run through Partnership for Health through us, and then we'll, we'll build the other partnership just to get through those two grants. Those grants end next year. We just can't get them split, so we'll work through that for one more year, and then there's a ship partnership that lasts for another four years, where we are gonna, I believe we, yeah, we're gonna get a contract written up for the ship memorandum for Partnership for Health and Prairie Lakes on working through that. If there's anything else, I'll let Commissioner Ebner talk about Partnership for Health. He is the chairman of that group still. And then, on Monday, yesterday, I was at the West Regional Water District up in Halsted. I had to leave that meeting early, but when I was there, we were going over the final survey update with, we had the reviewers' report there, so that we had three members from the community, one from Polk County, one from Norman, and one from Clay County, and we were giving them the viewers' report, which shows everything we've worked on and how it would operate. I left before any decisions were made on that. I'll let Commissioner Campbell report further on that. So, I left that meeting to go to Wild Rice Watershed, One Watershed One Plan Meeting in Ada, where we went through the watershed-based funding summary for, I'll just go through Clay County's numbers, so these are roughly two-year grants for FY '23, which expires. They had an extension there for that for one year, so that actually, the money has to be spent by 12/31/26. Clay County is down to just $32,000, and they should have that all spent by midsummer. There are a lot of planning money there that they're going to use. And then, FY '25, which expires in December 31st, '27, we're sitting on about $154,000 there, where we spent about $76,000. And a lot of that money gets spent in egg structures and as in for watershed, for, yeah, drain tile and stuff like that in the Wild Rice Watershed District. So, Clay County has Wild Rice Watershed District and the Buffalo River, so Buffalo River has a One Plan, too. So, the money has to be kept separate there, so the SWCD takes care of those dollars and keeps them separate on their balance books as well. And that, we had a little bit of other discussion there, nothing too important, but that is all I have to report. Chairman?
Thank you, Commissioner Ebner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also participated last Tuesday on the 18th for our interview for a public health director, and quite pleased with the results we saw today. On the 19th, Wednesday, I did a joint executive committee meeting with the chamber and the EDC involving Innovate '28 and some of the funding issues on that and some of the governance. Following that, later that day, I attended the Moorhead, or the Diversion Authority Finance Committee, pretty much just the general order of business, approving contract actions, and we do have a draft cash budget that was completed there. And later, following that, I had a, trying to keep everything straight here, no, I'm sorry, the following day, Thursday, the 20th, I attended the Greater Fargo-Moorhead EDC Executive Board Meeting, and again, we reviewed some of the projects and document-ready opportunities that are in the Cass-Clay area. There was some discussion about the programming and the budget of Innovate '28, which was covered the day before with the executive committee, the two executive committees meeting, and planned for a performance review and a comp study towards the end of the year. We're going to initiate a 360 review of the organization and management. Later that day, I had a Diversion Authority meeting. Again, this was very much, maybe Commissioner Campbell recalls, but pretty much standard business approval of the consent agenda with the items we had at Finance Committee the previous day and general, or project updates. We are advancing along and getting ready to shut things down for the winter, and then a finance had a 226 draft cash budget version three attached, and a sales tax update. Following that, I had an executive session for the Lake Agassy Regional Library Board over some concerns on the slate of candidates were put together for the, for next year. We met and resolved those issues, and it was followed by a full board meeting, a full Board of Trustees meeting, where we approved the slate of candidates, and I will be serving another year as president. We have a balance now with representation for an incoming Becker County representative. We are working on a strategic plan. Most of it has been completed, and that pretty much is what I've got from the library. On Friday, the 26th, as Commissioner Bear indicated, we had the P4H meeting. It was the last meeting of the four counties, and I want to express some thanks to Brandon Nelson with our Auditor's Office and Rory Beal. It was a comprehensive, and I think, a well-designed division of some of our grants and funding. Some of it is indicated by Commissioner Bear. We're going to have to carry through the year, but there's a very collegial attitude on that, and I'm particularly happy with the ship contract we've got, and we're going to come up with an agreement plan. We're near two of a five-year contract, and the state wants us to remain on SHIP, which is a statewide community health services advisory committee, and we're going to keep that up and running for all four counties, working in unison, so that's good news. And that completes my report.
All right. Thank you. On November 19th, I had the, I attended the Prairie Lakes Municipal Solid Waste Meeting. Two items that I focus on there, our finances and everything are pretty much running consistent with our budget, cash balances consistent with what we had last year. Two areas that I want to discuss, first one is ash management. I know there was some discussion with Justin this morning on using that product in roads. One of our biggest concerns right now that we have is the ash landfill that's in Otter Tail County, where we send all our ash to, as you know. We've found out now that that's going to reach its capacity in October of 2027. That's a real concern to us. We knew it was coming. We knew that, you know, we were hoping that we could get some of this ash stuff going to views and roads. If you recall, a long time ago, I brought up that we wanted a Plan B, which was to be able to expand that permit, and so currently, we're, obviously, we're looking at expanding the current permit, which does not allow us to go outwards, but allows us to go upward. Very familiar with that. That's what we've done at our landfill in Clay County. The concern that I have with that is, is some of those permit changes, some of them can take up to 10 years to get them done. We don't have 10 years, obviously. And so, we've really asked our executive director to really move strongly with getting that application. It's not even submitted yet, so we've got to really get moving on that. The, we generate between 10 and 12 tons of ash out of that facility a year. Our land, you know, so, for example, the one road that we did as a test pilot used 4,000 tons of ash.
4,000 tons?
Or 4,000 pounds? 4,000, 4,000 tons. No, wait, yeah, 4,000 pounds, yeah. No, because it's 10 tons, we're talking tons. So, the landfill, you can use as, we send about 10 tons a year.
To the landfill?
To the ash landfill. That one road used about 4,000, or 4 tons, excuse me.
4 tons.
Yeah, 4 tons, yeah. 4 tons in that project. So, basically, if we had did two projects like that a year, that would, that would at least help solve the problem for a little while. We also are, have improved, or we approved building a shed like what we have at the Highway Department for storing, and that can hold, basically, two years, that can hold 10 tons of ash in it. So, that might buy us a little bit of time. But anyway, we do have a dilemma on, with that ash, and that, so that's a, and that ash landfill is owned by Otter Tail County, but within Prairie Lakes's annual budget, we budget about $400,000 that we pay to Otter Tail County for the operations and maintenance of that, because that's, that's all it does, is it takes ash from Prairie Lakes. And the other thing I want to comment on is, is there was some, we had, Otter Tail County's HR department was at our meeting, and they had asked us to agree to, for Prairie Lakes to use Otter Tail County's policy regarding paid family medical leave. And so, when we got into those discussions, we had, our plant manager really spoke up and with real concern about that, and so, in Otter Tail County's plan, they do not allow employees to supplement their sick pay for the balance that they don't get from paid family medical leave. That's the current policy of Otter Tail County. And so, I spoke up on that, and I said, well, in Clay County, we've allowed our employees, because, I mean, we don't want, we want somebody to make sure they're whole, you know? You know, if they get, go through these things and they only get paid 60 or 70, and there's, depending on where you are in an income level, it has an impact on what percentage of paid family medical leave you have. So, and, you know, so, but if you're, if you're getting 60% paid for paid family medical leave, that doesn't mean your mortgage drops by 60%. It doesn't mean all your bills drop by, you know, by that amount. You still have to make all those payments. And so, I, you know, I spoke up really in favor of us, you know, maybe looking at not, but we were required to adopt, we needed to have a policy in place by December 1st. So ultimately, what the Prairie Lakes Board did was adopted Otter Tail County's policy, so that we have a policy in place with the idea in mind that we would look at modifications to that, and Otter Tail County said we don't have to follow theirs. I mean, we can, and so I'm certainly going to be advocating, you know, at that level that, that we look at more of what Clay County has done. And I, and Brian, the operations manager, really had strong concerns about the way it was currently proposed, and he thought it could really have an impact on employees as well, so. Those are the two issues there. There's other things, but those are the big issues. And then, on Thursday morning, we had our Clay County Solid Waste Advisory Committee meeting. We've pretty much, we dealt with the issues with the radios. There was a waste sort study that was done, something down the road that, that also I found really interesting was how much of household waste is organic product. You know, when you think about the cost of our landfills and organic product just going there, when there's, when there can be alternatives to that, you know, in terms of being able to compost or whatever, you know? So, it's something that we might want to be looking at in the future, but those are good, to have those, and I'm thankful for the college students who are willing to go through. You pretty much have to dress up in hazard uniforms and go through every piece of garbage.
It was Commissioner Gross's favorite part about.
Yeah, he, yeah. It was his, it was his favorite one time.
He was thrilled with it.
Yeah, he basically said, never again. So, anyway, so that was that, with the radio issue. And we did have one of our, one of our solid waste advisory committee members, who's, we all know here from his past work, had a, had a significant injury with a fire. He had a real severe, Joe Peterson had severe burns in a accident at home, and he's, he's recouping now. They, I believe they airlifted him to the burn unit in Minneapolis, and I guess just want to send our thoughts out to Joe and wish him a speedy recovery, that he can get home. He was, originally, he was hoping he'd get home by Thanksgiving, but it doesn't look like that's going to happen, so. But I think you all remember Joe from years ago, outside of, you know, with work with Lakes and Prairies, yes. He was the director of Lakes and Prairies for quite some time. Then, I had the Moorhead-Clay County Joint Powers. Commissioner Mojo talked about that in an example, so we did end up having some discussions with the landowner, and it just goes to show that even though sometimes a government entity has no choice but to go into an eminent domain, in this particular case, the conversations with the landowner continued, and the resolution was made outside of, you know, a final eminent domain process. So, so it goes to show that, you know, I think on the part of the diversion authority that they continue to work with landowners to try to come up with a solution outside of the last resort, which is eminent domain. Then we, then I had the diversion authority meeting that same day. I think the Commissioner Ebner talked about that. The one thing for 2026, the interesting deal in that is the diversion authority will be paying out approximately $1 billion in 2026. Their cash, their cash budget for 2026 could reach payout of $1 billion. When you think about that, that's a significant amount of money, but what you got to remember though is, so this diversion project has been under construction for several years, and part of that process was the contractors, you know, the, on the, the contractors were required to meet certain milestones to reach, to get those payments. And now, in 2026, they're going to really reach a significant portion of those milestones. And of course, in 2026, we're supposed to have all of our final lands all done and dealt with, so, yeah, a billion dollars is going to be paid out, a lot of it going to contractors. And by the way, a lot of it going to Minnesota contractors. That's, that's, you know, that's a really positive thing. So that's, that's, you know, that's a really positive thing. Then West Central, then we did have, I also attended the West Central Regional Water Board on, yesterday, the 24th. And I think after you left, Commissioner Baer, I think really the only thing that we got to, did a deep dive regarding the, the responsibilities of the viewers, because we have to submit a viewers' report as part of the district court process. And the three viewers were there yesterday at our meeting, one from each county. We had good representation there. A lot of good questions on their part, so they're taking it seriously. And then ultimately, they all signed the agreement and the oath, the viewers' oath that needs to go, that will be part of the presentation to the judge for the second hearing.
Mr. Chair?
Okay, yes.
I read in the paper that Barnesville is working with the Wilkin County Creation District. What's that regarding?
So I, at Partnership for Health, I, there was a Wilkin County Commissioner there, and I chatted with him about that. He said it's very early stages, they're looking at it. They've had one meeting so far. So that doesn't mean we can't bring them in, into ours, maybe, but they've had one, one, one meeting about it.
I, I, I think, you know, and I, and that's encouraging to hear that there's another county that's looking at a regional water, or, you know, the importance of regional water. I, any, any county that's interested in doing like that, they're, they're really better off trying to go in. Like Senator Pappas, when, when they were here in that last Senate, one of the comments that she made was, you know, this is a significant, important issue. But what she really liked about it was the regional approach. It's, it's a, you know, it's just similar to what we're talking about with our PRTF. You know, so, you know, from that standpoint, it's early on. You know, at some point in time, maybe if, if Wilkin really gets serious about it, there's no reason why we couldn't modify our, to include Wilkin County.
Right, I just thought it was, I had not heard of it yet.
Yeah, yeah. And I, I know there's a lot of interest in that southern area.
In Clay County.
Quite frankly, there's actually some interest in some of the people in the Pelican Lake area of Otter Tail County, who would like to see some rural water going to that area as well, so. But anyway, so that, you know, the viewers' report was, was done. There is going to be a, a letter that's going to be going out to all of the potential people who would be part of the, the Water District about the hearing process. So it's pretty much going to be every property owner in Clay County, with the exception of Moorhead and Dilworth, that will receive this letter, I think, to the tune of, I think they talked about, right now, they have about 19,000 letters going out.
For the district.
For the district. And they're hoping that maybe they, they can, originally, they start off at 22,000. They were able to cut it down to 19,000 based on landowners who have multiple parcels. And they're thinking that maybe they can get that down to 17,500. So those are all letters going out. It's important for our small communities to know that all, that all their citizens are going to be getting them and to understand that this is all a voluntary thing and a user-based, and nobody's forcing anybody into anything, so. But anyway, so that was, that was that. I don't have anything else to add to that. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I could start just with a clarifying question from Commissioner Ebbinghaus and Commissioner Baer. When we separated, or in the process of separating Otter Tail and Wilkin, we had to redo a delegation agreement. Part of the delegation, delegation agreement lays out the SHIP responsibilities. Was there any discussion at all about if we're going to continue on with that, that there would be, there'd be a, an adjustment?
My understanding is there was an agreement, and we brought it forward.
We, we do not have that agreement in place yet. We were going to get it drafted.
That's right.
Okay.
I believe.
There's an agreement that Rory and I have looked at that I believe is, is present. I don't think it's signed yet. We've looked at it, reviewed it. It covers those issues that we would still do, even though we're separate, but the one part that we're keeping. So there's an agreement for that part. I just don't think it's been executed yet, signed yet.
Yeah, and it was reviewed by the Otter Tail County Attorney as well, and she was happy. And it, it should be coming through. We've got a meeting the 5th, and I'll make a, another inquiry into that. Rory was well into the process on it.
Okay, thank you. Last Tuesday, I participated in the interviews. Want to thank the Board, Darren and Anna and Quinn for being part of that process. Excited about our candidate, or not our candidate, but our, our new Public Health Director, Jessica's going to do a great job. On, on the 19th, I, we met with Haley. As far, part of, reviewed our bonding tour. It's been discussed, discussed about the potential of getting a meeting together with the Governor's Office. On the 19th, we had a brief casino discussion, really not a great deal more information. We did discuss the news article that was in the White Earth Nation newspaper that talked about the meeting that they had up at the reservation. On the 19th, I met with Jessica. On the 20th, we had MCC JPA meeting that's been well-covered. On the 21st, a non-sealed detention meeting, which has also been well-covered. On the 23rd and 24th, worked on the Mayak presentation. Excited to be a part of that. We had a deadline of Monday to get the presentation in, so. So we were able to get that under, under the deadline. Participated in the Water District meeting yesterday, which has been well-covered. And yesterday afternoon, met with Mr. Melton on a county issue happening. Would just note that for our citizens, that we are going to be closed on November 24th, or, excuse me, November 27th and 28th in observation of Thanksgiving. That concludes my report.
All right. Brian?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Nothing, all right.
They took away my microphone, so I won't. Maybe they're trying to tell me something, I don't know.
Thanks for your report, Darren.
I won't, I won't take it personally. Most of mine have already been covered. Public Health Director interviews, participated in that. Board of Adjustment and Planning Commission meeting, both on November 18th. Commissioner Mojo covered that, or no, Commissioner Krabahoff covered that very well. November 19th, sat in on the Legislative Planning Update with our lobbyists, updated our negotiation status, and had a meeting with Anna and Steve. On the 20th, I sat in on the SWAC meeting as well, which was covered by Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Mojo. At afternoon, I had MNCCC meeting. November 21st, sat in on the Legislative Meeting and had the LEC Admin Staff Negotiations. Thought we were going to have a tentative agreement there, ran into a snag, but hopefully we'll, we'll get that negotiated pretty quickly. And November 24th, had a meeting with Mark and Brian Melton, Mark Sloan and Joe Olson regarding handling of data practices requests. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
I was just going to say, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, we've been seeing a significant increase in the number of data requests that, that we're receiving, that is starting to impact the amount of time our staff are having to spend. And so part, part of the things, reason that Darren and, and Brian and Mark are meeting is to look at, look at those data requests. And we have a policy, but with the increased, increased demand that we're having to, look to make sure that we're, we have a policy that's meeting the, the change. So that'll be probably coming forward in the next few months.
Commissioner Mojo?
Thank you. Yesterday, late afternoon, there was a report that there was a Moorhead, someone that was being charged with the Feeding Our Future scandal, that fraud Pelican Rapids and Moorhead sites. Can we have staff look into if any, you know, staff funds, or not staff funds, levy funds had gone into the supports of that? I don't, Commissioner Campbell and I served on the COVID relief funds, and I, I don't recall seeing the name of that organization, but just want to make sure that we are not and have not contributed funds to that organization.
We can do that.
Thank you. And that might actually fall into connecting with Cecilia from Extension. I know that regionally, there was some food supports, food support work that happened with Rosie in the Pelican Rapids area, and just want to make sure that we're not continuing any of that.
All right. Sarah, do you have anything for us today? We're adjourned.